Thank you. Call the meeting to order. Welcome all to the July meeting of the Borough of Marsville Council. As I said, we were running a few minutes late. We had an executive session to discuss some ongoing litigation as well as some personnel matters involving the police department. And with that, we will lead off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in standing with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, Virginia, would you take a roll call of council?
Yes. Yes. Mayor Anderson?
Here.
Ms. Gilmore?
Present.
Mr. Law.
Here.
Mr. Luther?
Here.
Mr. Inez?
Here.
Mrs. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Paul?
Here.
Mr. Robinson?
Here.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Here.
Our borough solicitor?
Scott Holbert on behalf of Flagrant Associates.
And our borough manager?
Present, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Virginia. Okay, do we have any announcements and presentations to start off? Okay, none. That moves us directly to the public comment portion. And you each have three minutes. Please, when you stand up, tell us your name and address, and I'll call you in order. And we'll start with Susan Dingwall.
Hi, I'm Susan Dingwall. I live at 146 Harrison Avenue in Marsville. We're planning on having a block party August the 19th, and we're hoping that you approve that we block this street off. We are able to use the parking lot next to us where the youth center is, but having the street blocked off would be a safer way of keeping the children safe, and we're looking forward to it. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. James Schwartz.
James Schwartz, 580 Rosemore Drive. Primarily, I'm here to support Sue and Tom. It's been a lot of really good, a lot of people are very interested in this, surprised how much of a response we're getting through the neighborhood. So, on the 19th of August, we'll prove it. I hope you guys come down because it's gonna be pretty, pretty cool. It's been a long time since we did this. I remember as a kid, we used to have block parties and just be nice and hopefully we can advertise and have a good turnout. The second thing I'd like to do is, I want to honor my cousin Mindy, Mindy Bond, who we laid her to rest on Saturday. Mindy was a big part of this community. Working at Burns, most of them in town knew her. And, you know, it's funny because life can be hard, and when you lose a child, it definitely affects you very badly. But Mindy was an amazing woman. She touched so many lives here in this borough, whether it be with her job or just her friendship. She was a huge part of Marsville. Born and raised 57 years, you know, Carlisle, and then when her and Jeff got married, moved to Prospect, they stayed Marsville people. And I just want to honor her today. And I'm just glad for the opportunity, guys, let me do this on a public affair. And God rest my cousin Mindy Bond.
Sincere condolences to your cousin.
Condolences, Jimmy.
The Environmental Advisory Council appreciates council's consideration of a committee to explore community choice aggregation. We urge you to help Marsville address the need for clean energy. The EAC is willing to participate and assist in any way we can. Extreme weather events are more frequent and more deadly. The dirty emissions we are spewing into the air create heat-trapping gases that cause the volatility of these storms. They create perfect conditions for more persistent high heat, drought, and severe wildfires. We're having to lock down inside because we can't breathe the air outdoors. Saturday's tragic and deadly flash flooding in our own backyard, along with these smoky days, should scare the heck out of us. This has to be a priority. It is a critical issue with public health and safety. Continuing to pollute without concern is no longer an option. The borough has a current energy package. Are we defaulting to PICO's high-cost, dirty energy, electricity? Are there better options? Let's find out. We have the power to access a cleaner energy contract at no cost. We have a knowledgeable network that informs and advises us at no cost. We can access grants for projects that help us become a more sustainable and resilient town at no cost. We urge council members to reach out to Norberg Media and Swarthmore about their decision to proceed with CCA. Learn why these communities are among the many in Pennsylvania who understand the need to protect their residents. Regarding the council, I wanted to know if there's a specific reason as to why three council members are required for the proposed committee? And would you consider perhaps allowing any EAC members to substitute for any of them? Using your advisory boards is an advantage as it taps into further resources and reduces the burden on a few of you. Please approve the committee, and let's have a vote, though, on the resolution to sign the MOU, which does not put the borough at any risk. It doesn't bind the borough to any obligation, and it really makes a powerful statement that Marsville is addressing the climate crisis. We have to get to work, anything we can do, to reduce our contributions to this devastating climate upheaval we are seeing must begin now. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Gary Wallace at 719 Crown Street. The heart of this issue with our neighborhood and Banyon use of 705 Crown Street property is our neighborhood's concern with the enforcement of current zoning code. We rely on our local government to protect our residential neighborhoods and ally with residents against outside businesses who do not have our community's best interest in mind when making decisions that have local impact. We believe that Banyon had manipulated the use of the Fair Housing Act and the ADA in its most recent zoning application as an intimidation tactic after its prior failed attempt in 2018 to use the apartment building as a transitional housing. We have mounting concern that Banyon may plan expansions to the building, which is not adherent to code. We fear that the permit issued to 705 Crown Street sets a precedent for vague allowances in code enforcement within our community and borough, which would erode the purpose of the residential areas as defined per Article 3. We must protect our residents from companies and/or businesses eroding neighborhoods with nonadherence to code to prevent future compromise of our communities. What we ask is that council investigates the zoning enforcement and insurance of the November 8, 2022 zoning permit for 725, 705 Crown Street. We also ask that Banyon's use of the apartment is strictly regulated with the continual oversight to ensure their adherence to number of patients and screening criteria for patients residing in the apartment outlined in their application. We ask that the integrity of the current structure be maintained as is, and that any addition to the structure be denied to uphold the integrity of this R1 district and definition of a garden apartment, as to no expansion was documented in Banyon's application. We ask for clarity as to why residents were not made aware of the November 8, 2022 zoning permit, and that moving forward, there is transparency in zoning permits and changes in our neighborhood. We hope for a continued alliance with council to ensure proper zoning enforcement for continued preservation of our historic neighborhoods within a historic borough. We take pride in our neighborhood and community with multiple residents from our neighborhood participating in borough organizations, local volunteering, and supporting of local small businesses, and hope to continue working with council towards sustainable, intentional communities and development within a historic borough rich in character. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Polly Harmon.
Polly Harmon, 371 Plaza Boulevard. I'm here to object to the, I vehemently disagree with the Jazz Festival being cosponsored. It's a conflict of instance on Nancy's part. I also recall years ago, Nancy borrowed $500 from the borough to run her Jazz Fest when Bob Subey was our manager, and to my knowledge, it has not been repaid. I also recall that Nancy was the one who spearheaded the no alcohol policy at the senior center, which essentially shot them in the foot for all their fundraising. So, I find it really kind of ironic that right now, she wants to do both of these things to benefit her private foundation. None of that money comes back to the borough. Thank you.
Any other members of the audience interested in making public comment? Okay, thank you. That concludes that portion. Moving on to approval of minutes. Can I? To approve the borough minutes for?
The borough minutes of?
June 20, 2023?
Correct, the regular meeting, yes.
Thank you. Okay, a second.
Some of.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you, the motion carries. Nancy, Treasures Report. You all have the bill list in front of you. Can I get a motion to approve the bill list?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Passes, thank you. Moving on to reports. The mayor's report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. So, first, congratulations to the Recreation Committee and everybody involved in this past week's concert and food festival in the park. Unfortunately, it was cut short a little bit by rain, but I would say it was still a success. There was a lot of people that got to enjoy both the food, the music, and they even hung out for a little bit when the rain started. And so, I consider that a huge success, and just one more thing that we've been adding to our list of things for our community to do. So, that's positive. We keep that up, we build on that, and before you know it, we'll have stuff like this every week. So, just to keep you posted on that, we have National Night Out coming next Tuesday. There have been questions why it's not the first Tuesday of August, and we just want to reiterate what I've said before, and that is simply, this has become a very popular event. When we first started doing it here in Marsville, not a lot of people around here were participating. So, this year, it was a lot easier to bump it up a week and get everything we could for the community to enjoy, for the kids. We have the ID truck coming, we have a helicopter coming at 7:00, there'll be a movie, there'll be fireworks afterwards, and the list goes on. There's more information on the borough website, and I'll share that tomorrow as well. So, that's next Tuesday. Get on out there, it's, there's gonna be a lot to do, and it's always a fun thing. And everything's free, with the food, everything is free, so, you know, don't eat lunch. After that, as mentioned earlier, we have the 20th Annual Jazz Fest, and 20 years in a row. That's a huge success, right? It really is. And if you've ever been to the Jazz Fest, it's one heck of an entertaining event, and it's a nice, I'm not a jazz music fan, but I always enjoy it every single time. So, it's, and I'm looking forward to that as well. Then, also upcoming, we have our annual Labor Day picnic. On Labor Day, of course, September 17th, you have the Irish Festival coming up, and then on October 7th, that's the next food truck music festival, correct?
October 7th?
Yes. Is that right?
That's the Oktoberfest.
The Oktoberfest. So, just off that list, you can see we've got a lot of things coming up. Hopefully, we'll see that block party as well, and, you know, you keep your eye on all our local sites, because there's a lot of, you know, the churches and schools, and there's a lot of other things going on as well for our community to do. So, I'm excited about that. I'm somebody who's been in the entertainment business a long time, I'm good to see, I'm glad to see more and more things going on for our residents. Jimmy, my condolences. That was a very heartfelt speech, so, you know, my thoughts and prayers go out to you and your family, and like you said, everybody's life was touched, and a lot of people's, certainly mine, so, you know, my thoughts are with you. Republic Trash Service. Last summer, briefly before our last council president left, we had Republic Trash Service show up here, with a couple representatives, and they promised from that point forward to do 100% of their job, to not have any more issues, and et cetera. At that point, our council president said to those two representatives, should we have any more problems, we are going to revisit that contract and possibly make a change at that position. And a lot of you remember, and I know most of this council wasn't here when it was done, but it wasn't that long ago that we outsourced this. It was something we used to do here in the town as a service. It was billed individually, not rolled into our taxes like it is now. And so, we pay a heck of a lot of money for our town to look like what should be in the back of the truck. And it happens every week, almost, there's at least one part of town that gets missed. Last week after the holiday, we had all over town for three days, and it just, I mean, not only is it a disservice to our residents, but it looks like crap. So, I would ask that at some point in the near future, we revisit that contract and do something different, do something that'll work a little better, because the constant claims that their truck breaks down, or they're shorthanded that day, or it's a holiday, that's only, you can only get away with those things so many times. We're looking at something that happens every week, and we pay a lot of money from this borough for it. So, I would really ask that we go ahead and revisit that. Moving forward, so, ever since I took office, I have been working, trying to rebuild and restaff our police force. And we've, unfortunately, in that time, we've had people leave for different reasons, we've had certain things happen, we've had people get hurt, and right now, we are actually, we're low-staffed, we're below-staffed, we're trying to fill shifts, and there's nobody available right now to, you know, to hire out there. This is a nationwide problem, not a Marsville, or a Bucks County, or a Pennsylvania problem. This is an industry that has had a mass exit and nobody coming into it. And hopefully, that'll change in the future, but that's not how it is now. So, my goal is to plan more ahead. Instead of saying every month that we need to address it, I'm going to plan more ahead. So, I'm going to, first, I'm going to be recommending, and the council and the manager will get these this week from me, I'm going to be recommending both a law enforcement committee, which both gets our residents and our council involved in the procedures, and also allows us to discuss things and get ahead of things. And then, we're also gonna make a detailed plan for not only hiring, but for retaining our officers, so we don't have this problem in the future. We don't, we've lost people for different reasons, but we want to find ways to retain them. We want to, we want to get that force back up to a point where we're not worried if we're gonna have two people on the street one night. That's a huge concern, and yes, I absolutely sit home and worry about that. If we lose one more officer right now, we're in big trouble. And this is nothing against anybody, but there's no one out there to hire right now. So, my goal with this plan is to be ready in October when the next list comes out, so when that list comes out, we can be ready to hire. So, I'm gonna put together with Chief McClay a detailed plan for that, as well as a proposal for the law enforcement committee, and I'll be forwarding those along to council and everybody else. So, I just wanted to make everybody aware of that. And also, I want to bring you up to speed. We do our truck, our truck officer, which we've all been looking forward to, all of this, the whole time, he is now certified. He is at the point now, he's gone through all his classes, and he simply needs to write a certain amount of tickets to complete his certification. The problem is, and we said this could happen in the beginning, we don't have the manpower to put him on the street to do that right now, and it's something that we all want, me, the chief, everybody sitting up here, the residents. This is a huge issue. So, the good news is, he's certified, he's ready to go. So, that, I just wanted to give you an update on that, because once we are in a position to give him full shifts to do that, that will be happening. So, that is a huge asset, and we're very happy that it moved along. And thank you to Councilwoman Hubble, who helped and has been very diligent with that process as well. And, well, that's all I have for tonight. Thanks, everybody who came out for public comment and spent their time here, as well as watching it at home. I always appreciate your time and your comments and everything else, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess the police chief is on vacation. Do we have any, no report for the police, I take it, this week?
He should be here shortly. If you like, I can give you an exact time, but he is on his way here.
Okay, well, then we'll move on. Committee reports. Any committee reports?
I have a Parks Immigration Report.
Yes.
Thank you. As you can tell, we were very busy last Saturday. We had a great event. I think Kurt Kelly said that he counted approximately about, at the total, about 300 people, about 700 people less than we thought we were gonna have, but considering it was 93 degrees, thunderstorms, and rain, the band was fabulous. Lots of people, even when it started raining, they went to their cars and opened up their windows so they could hear the band play. And then, when it really started coming down, people gathered with all their umbrellas, and then finally went up on the stage, and then they played for about a half an hour more. So, I want to thank them and all the people and volunteers who helped that event be successful. I do have a meeting on the 25th, our next meeting. Unfortunately, I didn't get the agenda out, and I apologize. It's been a little hectic for me these last few weeks, but we'll be discussing the next few events coming up. We've been working hard on the Irish Festival, the Jazz Festival, and the Oktoberfest. So, we've got a lot of great things planned, and we've got a lot of community volunteers stepping up and helping us and making that happen. But the biggest thing is in August, I want to get this right, August 22nd, we're gonna have a public meeting, and we have someone from Gilmore Engineering who will be talking about future plans for Williamson Park. This is the town's time to come, and tell us what you think, what you want. Doesn't mean we're gonna get it all, because we don't have any money right now, but that doesn't mean if we focus on things that we can do and prioritize, that we can work on getting the grant money to make it happen. So, we really want as many of you can to come out. If not, email me what you would like me to address, and I'll do that. So, thank you very much, and appreciate all your support.
Thank you. That was a great concert on the weekend. I'm glad I got there right before the clouds opened up, but the band was fantastic, really, really top-notch. Any other committee reports?
One more. Civil Service Commission. We've gotten together for a couple meetings lately. As the mayor just said, we're down a police officer. We just had an officer transfer out to another department. So, we advertised position on July 7th. That was in the paper and also on a website that is a county consortium police website. All the candidates on the consortium list, for those of you out there that don't know what the consortium is, the county has a, we hire through civil service, and the county does a consortium for, what would be, what's the term? People that want to be police officers. They take a written test, and they take a physical fitness test. They get ranked by that through the county, and we participate in, with a lot of other boroughs of hiring off that list. The list is a little barren right now, because the consortium was back in March. The next one's gonna be in October. Hopefully, we can make it till then. As of Friday, July 14th, we received two applications. One was sent a denial letter because it was received before the public notice was posted about the opening, July 6th, and secondly, because the individual is not on the consortium list that we're hiring off. Requested that the job opening be placed on the Borough and Police website. Barb hasn't seen it posted yet. I'm deferring to Barb, who's the chair of the Civil Service Commission. We have, when we have applicants, is it good, Judith?
It was done.
It was?
Yes.
Okay, good. We have, now, after the candidates come through the consortium, we interview them down here. We have an oral board that we put together with some fantastic police officers. All three of the officers that are gonna be on our board have all worked in Marsville. The chief in Tullytown was an officer here back in the late 80s, early 90s. Retired chief from Tullytown, Dan Doyle, had worked here, and a lieutenant up in Hilltown Township, Lieutenant Brown, also worked here. So, they're high-ranking, really, really good cops, and they know Marsville Borough. Our provided the Borough Office with an Excel spreadsheet for tracking applications received, and all applications will be date and timestamped, because there's a time constraint of when people can apply. And finally, we confirmed that the next consortium test is going to be on October 28th. So, hopefully, we'll have some applications here that we can bring some people in and get them hired. If not, we'll have a, should have a good crop of candidates towards the end of October.
Thank you. I overlooked the, our borough manager, I need to defer to her for the borough manager's report.
Could I interrupt for one second?
Go right ahead.
I'm on the Facebook page for the Marsville Borough Police Department. I don't see the listing for hiring a police officer. Do you think, Mayor Anderson, you could take care of that?
We can put up a posting, but there's nobody on the list to hire right now, as Scott just said, but I don't see why it couldn't be put up. I mean, Tullytown put up one last week, and they got, I think it was 72 shares, and last I heard, they hadn't had any responses. So, can it be put up? Of course it can. And might it help? Maybe. So, I'll look into it.
The problem with that list, I want to start, there's state law, there's borough code and whatnot that kind of handcuff us, no pun intended, in the process for hiring. And as I said, the list is pretty barren. People should know about this before the consortium so they can take the consortium, because generally, the way we've always done it was, we've advertised in the paper, but the advertising goes out after the consortium was done. So, you can't apply for the job unless you took the consortium, but you didn't see the ad for the job till after the consortium. So, now, we're getting a word out there for people that are interested to get out there and get us on.
Yes, yeah, thank you, Scott. That's actually a very detailed update, and that's kind of the, one of the directions we were going, what I was saying earlier, we're gonna put together a hiring and retention plan, and so that's exactly the idea. So, and thank you for the update, that's very detailed.
Okay, now the manager's report.
Thank you, Council President Paul. As Catherine had noted, we do have a flyer regarding Williamson Park and the Public Workshop and Listening Meeting, which is Tuesday, August 22nd, at 7:00 PM, right here at Borough Hall. So, anyone that is interested in coming and attending and voicing your thoughts and plans of what you think the Williamson Park should look like, it would be greatly appreciated if you could show up at 7:00 and be included and participate. We think that- We think that would be a wonderful thing.
Do you know, there was a plan done a couple years ago. Do you think the staff could find it and have that available for that meeting, so that people can see what was done in the past?
Yes, we will look, and I know that I had been working with Catherine and Ms. Cogan regarding, I know you had some old things.
Yeah.
Catherine, do you have that old plan?
Yeah, I brought it to several of the meetings, and I think it's one, I don't know who gave it to me, but yeah, that we're looking at that. But that was more also with open spaces and connecting our canals and, and all that for walking and, and to increase tourism, so that will be part of it. So, yeah, we do have that. Thank you.
Thank you. Regarding our Highway Aid Project and our 2023 Roadway Project, the award letter will consist of paving Hillcrest Avenue from Barnsley Avenue to Stockham Ave. and North Lafayette Ave., from Hillcrest Ave. to Clymer Ave., for a project total of $215,685.96. We will not be awarding Keystone Ave. at this time, due to the work that's needed to be accomplished by the MMA and the roadway at this time. Once that is completed, we'll revisit the Keystone Ave. area. So we're happy to announce that our roadway project very shortly will be underway. We have also, the blighted procedure has been taking place regarding 327 Prospect Avenue. The RDA Board has authorized a condemnation. The property's been posted, and we'll be just waiting for procedures to follow through with that. I'm happy to also report that the Eagle Scout project will take place at Williamson Park. It's actually currently taking place down there. Giant thank you to Public Works for helping out with the area. The Eagle Scout has been down there, and he's been, he's the beginning of his work on the macadam and so forth, and before you know it, you'll see a pickleball net up in that area. Once the project is complete, we'll let everyone know where we stand with that, but I'm proud to announce that. And that's all I have for this evening, unless there's any questions from council.
Mr. Paul?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, for Judith. Judith, the meeting that you had regarding the Poskayland, was that something that they've invited us to be a part of?
Yes. I had reached out to Falls Township probably last year, that if they had anything that was in, in line with Morrisville, since we are a contiguous municipality, if they would please include us, and they did include us.
So, did anything come about?
So we're, that's why my report is vague. We're still waiting for more information on that, and Attorney Holbert may have some information.
Yeah, we did meet with the developer and their attorney and Falls Township representatives at the end of last month, just as the introductory, but, yeah, they'll, knowing the developer, or developer's attorney, I should say, yeah, he'll be very inclusive, very forthcoming with any information if we need, but it's in the very early stages of the plan. This was just an introductory meeting and just getting all the players involved at the same table.
I know there was an interest by one of the businesses close by that wanted to take it, but it wasn't passing the DEP test, so I just want to make sure that that's part of that conversation, please.
Yeah, I know they were talking about that. That was still going on, ongoing for their purposes. Yeah, that was something that either was in the process or hasn't happened yet, but yeah, it needs to be. That's the number-one thing on the list, and why stuff hasn't been formally submitted yet.
Okay. And second question for Judith. The, the payment for the Colonial Gardens, this was the tax appeal, there was, on the bill list, there was a payment of $54,000, $52,000, I think. So I did think that this was supposed to be in increments. Can you give us an update on that?
I can handle this one. Yeah, it was supposed to be in increments. It was supposed to be a credit system, but we are doing it in increments. What ended up happening is, there was a payment for 20, a refund for 20, what year is this? 2023?
Yes.
Yeah, so there was a refund payment for 2022, as well as, as well as a payment under the settlement agreement for 2022, that were also included with that. The payment for 2022 didn't go out at the right time, so it was all, so it was really three installment payments in one, so there's still one more installment payment next year.
So the $52,000 that we just approved this evening, so it's more than the 40, because the 40 is in her, 40 is listed?
There was two properties, remember? So, yeah, so it would have been more, because of also, because there was three, there was three, three years in the agreement itself, and then one year of a refund of something that I already paid.
Okay.
So, yeah, it would have been more than the number that's in there.
And for the public's knowledge, too, this, this agreement was almost trifold, because the school district was also involved in it, so they're also giving a refund.
As, as is the county as well.
And the county, right, trifold, so. So when the taxes went up in all three entities, this could have been a piece of the pie. Thank you.
Okay, I see Chief McClay's in the building. Then we have the police chief's report.
Hi. Very quickly tonight, I want to speak about the catalytic converters. Back on June 29th, we had possibly 15 catalytic converters stolen throughout the borough within a couple-hour period. We've been able to identify the vehicle along the license plate that came out of New York. Apparently, we're the Bucks County detectives, T-NOT, New Jersey, and the Sulfur County detectives to try to get these guys in custody. With that, like I said, we have the car identified, we have the owners identified, so that's about as far as I'd like to go with that one. The homicide back in the center of Lenora, we have three people in custody for that job, and it's been cleared, but that's about the only information I'm allowed to give right now, because, I can't give you any more than that, but that is cleared. Movie night, July 20th, is this week, at 8:00, and then National Night Out will be July 25th, starting at 6:00. The movie will be at 8:30 after the conclusion of it, and then fireworks will be at 10:00. That'll be a nice event, we have a lot of people coming, helicopters, police departments, fire departments, dogs, a lot of different things. And that is free to the borough, free to everybody in the borough. There is no cost, there's been no cost in borough. It's all through contributions. So, that's all I have. Thank you. Questions?
Thank you, chief.
I do have one. You want me to ask it? So I, this is just through the gossip mill, through other people. Apparently, there's a chief's luncheon or chief's meeting that occurs, and I was told that there is a chief that is just talking so despairingly about our officers, that they're incompetent, that they're this, they're that, they're that. Have you heard anything about that, that goes on?
I'm at that preface every Friday morning at Chicago. It's a very good session that we have, because there's a lot of like views around, but there's no one talking bad about Morrisville.
Okay. If you, if you heard it, you would obviously say you're wrong, right? Just asking.
I'd love to know where the rumor mill gets to you, but not to me.
People talk.
People are wrong.
Okay, that's good to hear, because I always speak highly of our officers.
Chief, I'd like to commend the young officer that was at the Saturday event. He was great, he was respectful, and it was really nice having him there. So, thank you. He was a nice officer and...
Well, Miss August is a very good officer. He's one of the ones that I recruited from another borough, and he has stepped up in a big way to take over firearms, to take over my computers, so he's a, he's a very good officer.
A lot of the people were very impressed with him, and made comment to me about it, so I wanted to share that with you. So, thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Thank you, chief. Okay, moving on to our action items. Item 8A, call for a motion to approve the issuance of a latter mill notice directed to the chief of police. I got a motion.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Now, I guess we, we talked about this at executive session, actually. Let's do this by roll call, Virginia.
Yes, may I confirm the first one, the motion?
It was Carlyfa Murray.
Thank you very much. Okay, I will begin. Mr. Paul, is it okay?
You want to begin with me?
No, she's asking.
No, no, sorry. Is it okay to go ahead with?
Please do, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Lubin?
Yes.
Mr. Lawal?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Minett?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
No.
And Ms. Engelhardt?
No.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries seven to two, I mean, five to two, no, sorry, six to two. I've lost my marbles. Anyway, moving on, item 8B, call for a motion to approve the 2023 to 2024 gasoline and diesel annual bid contract through the Bucks County Consortium. Unleaded regular gasoline, Riggins, Inc., at .189 dollars per gallon, market fluctuation pricing. On-road ultra-low sulfur diesel fuel, Riggins, Inc., at .329 dollars per gallon, market fluctuation pricing.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions. Thank you. Item 8C, call for a motion to ratify and approve final 2022 to 2025 agreement between the Borough of Morrisville and the Morrisville Borough Police Association.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Motion carries, thank you. Item 8D, call for a motion to approve new heating and air conditioning package option in the amount of $10,300 for the Morrisville Rescue Squad Building.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Motion carries. Item 8E, call for a motion to approve Police Directive 116 Patrol Equipment Uniforms Body Armor.
So moved.
All in favor?
Discussion. I just want to make sure our attorneys looked it over?
Yes, the attorneys from Santa looked it over. They had no issues.
Thank you.
Who was the second?
Andrew.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Motion carries, thank you. Item 8F, call for potential motion after discussion regarding zoning hearing notice for Area Enclosures, Inc. of Bristol, Pennsylvania, for Americana Apartments at 371 Plaza Boulevard, on whether council will or will not direct the solicitor to attend the zoning hearing board meeting on August 7th, 2023, on behalf of Borough.
So moved.
I guess first we have to have the discussion.
To send or not to send?
Now, in discussing this with, with, with our solicitor, I've been advised that this is a relatively formality, a techn, that we don't really have any issue at stake here, that we would necessarily want to send and pay for a solicitor to attend, but I'm willing to hear any positions to the contrary.
I only, I was only going to pass, I mean, I was only going to accept a motion so that we could have a discussion.
Yeah.
So I have no objection.
I guess I'd have the discussion, then it leaves either a motion or no motion. I think.
I have, I have no objection.
Correct.
Anyone else have any feelings about this, strong or otherwise?
So what, what is it that you want to do? You want to, the solicitor to go or not to go?
Not to go.
Not to go, okay.
Yeah, if the issue is you do not want us to attend, you don't need to take a vote, we can just move on to the next day.
This is, this is a case of less is more.
I'm good with less is more.
Okay. Very good, then we'll move on to item 8G, call for a motion to approve Harrison Avenue Block Party, Harrison Avenue Street Closure from Coleman Avenue to Baker Avenue, sponsored by New Wine Church, on Saturday, August 19, 2023, from noon to 4:00 p.m.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay, motion carries. Item 8H, call for a motion to approve Borough Co-Sponsoring Jazz Festival on Sunday, August 20, 2023, in Williamson Park, pending receipt of completed special events involving consumption of alcohol permit application packet.
So moved.
Second.
Can I ask a question? I thought we already approved this.
Catherine, the, the co-sponsoring is approved, but the, with the ordinance regarding the alcohol, we have not gotten the application as of yet.
Well, then, that doesn't require a resolution, though, does it?
Yes. We, we, it requires approval whenever the alcohol is included. We have not, normally, we would provide counsel with the alcohol application for this evening. We don't have that yet.
No one's applied. Right?
Correct. There is, there is, we don't have that. So would you have the Jazz Fest without the alcohol, then?
Of course.
And we've already approved that, so that doesn't require any action.
So, so will there be an alcohol application at this time, then?
I don't know. That depends on whether they respond to you or not.
Yeah, probably we hope that it would.
Let me ask you, if there were an application, is that, is that something that you can, that you handle administratively, or does it still have to come back to council for approval, even?
It must come back to council.
That we actually approved the complete application?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't, I would, even though I'm on the ordinance committee, you'd think I would know that, but I didn't.
No, whenever the alcohol is involved, I can't make that decision. Counsel has to make that decision.
But I thought we voted, okay, I'm confused, but I'm, you know, not going to disagree. I want to just disagree. It just makes it very tough, because it has to be 60 days in advance, and we have to get it before council, and I think we need to look at that and think that this is, might just be a big roadblock.
Certainly, that's why it's on the agenda, because there's a 60-day time period, which we're past already, for the, for the alcohol application to be provided to me, so we haven't gotten that.
So in case we get one, this covers it, is up what you're saying? We're going to waive that 60 days?
That's entirely up to council.
But is that what this could cover? Is that what you're saying?
If council were to choose to do that, yes.
Okay. I was going to suggest that we have the motion anyway, just in case something came up, but if it's not going to cover this, if we're not going to waive the 60-day requirement, then we don't need it.
Right.
Yeah, you don't need it.
In fact, can council waive the requirement?
We could if we wanted to.
We're council.
No, I mean, the ordinance, does the ordinance provide for the fact that we can overrule, or is it basically?
You, because it's an ordinance, you wouldn't have, you would have, we would have had to have something in there saying they could, you could re- waive the 60-day requirement, as it's an ordinance itself. I don't remember including such language to that.
So we might have to go back to the drawing board for that, at least, I was having to do that.
It would be an amendment, right?
Yeah, and the idea of the 60 days was, one, to get in front of you, but also to make sure before it came to council, all the stuff, all the departments were spoken to, and it was something we could handle. So that was the idea for the 60 days.
Right.
So then, are we going on the premise that there will not be alcohol at this time?
I, I would like to go on the premise that there will be alcohol.
There will be.
But we, we were just told we can't do that.
Yeah.
Because of the 60 days.
How come you didn't? It passed the 60 days, so.
Yeah, I think it's, it's out for, for this one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So, no action?
No action. Well, my, my question, actually, which I made my notes when I was reading it, was, what does co-sponsor mean? What was that actually going to?
That was my question back when we talked about co-sponsoring. What's sponsoring even mean?
Wasn't co-sponsoring only in the event that if there was alcohol, that the Borough had an opportunity?
Required that the Borough co-sponsor it if there was alcohol, yes.
If there was alcohol, so if there's not going to be any alcohol, then we really would need to co-sponsor this.
Yeah, this, the event itself has already been approved.
Yeah, we've already proved that co-sponsoring it.
Yes, the event itself, the event itself had been approved. The reason that it's on the agenda is because we're past the 60-day period, per the ordinance we just adopted, and I wanted to make sure that if Parks and Recreation had an application ready to go, and... go, and counsel was moved to allow the six, you know, the less than 60 days, that we would have it on the agenda for discussion. At this time, it's not going to happen. It will be a non-alcoholic event, and no action will be required, because it was voted on previously. So we'll gear up for a future alcohol event.
Can we then approve the Irish Festival and the Oktoberfest?
We, we have to have the application to do that.
Got it. Now I understand. Thank you.
So, so once you get the application to me, and it's.
Well, they've been delivered, and they were told to deliver them to you. So they're not coming back to us.
Sure. I have not gotten anything at this time.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. So can I get back to the cosponsor for a second?
Go ahead.
So I'm going to guess that maybe the cosponsoring is that the foundation wouldn't have to pay for the stage, because they're not, you know, I'm taking care of all the printing, the insurance, which I've already submitted, the, and I'm paying for all the, the entertainment. So I'm not really sure what the cosponsoring piece was.
Cosponsor is that, that the Borough will forego the fee.
The stage fee?
Stage fee, correct.
Okay, well, thank you for that.
Isn't that also the insurance, that the Borough will cover the insurance?
We still ask for insurance if they are.
I sent the insurance in. It has been sent in.
Yes. Of course, our insurance is, is over that, too.
Correct.
Yes.
I probably shouldn't, I have some comments to make, but I, I don't think it's appropriate to speak to them now. But if Ms. Harmon stays till the end of the meeting, I'll, I'll be making them then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next one. Call for a motion, this is, this ties in with Ms. Colgan's comments earlier, and let me, let me talk through this. Call for a motion to establish a committee of not less than three council members to explore the program proposed by Community Choice Aggregation, which was a presentation, they, they made a presentation at our last meeting in June. And I had, I had specified the three council members, just because I envisioned this as a, as a committee of council, in which case we need at least three members. We've run into that issue in the past, where we've had less than three, and it's, it doesn't work. I also wanted to, to, to set this up as, as kind of an exploration committee, to determine whether or not, how seriously we want to get involved in it. Do we, do we, do we want to go as far as even a memorandum of understanding? And so I thought if we, if there are at least three people on council who are interested enough to carry this forward, that that would, that would kind of, that would, would take us to the next step.
I'll make the motion.
So let's make the motion, and if we, if, if it falls short, we can consider other possibilities, but why don't you make the motion? To establish a committee of not less than three council members to explore the program.
So moved. But I might ask for an amendment.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Do you, do you just want to give it to the policy committee to do?
No.
Okay.
Because I'm on the policy committee.
I don't think it's a policy.
What I want, what I want for this is I want people who are really interested in this issue, who understand the issue, who are going to like, you know, sink their teeth into it. And I know that, 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 that right now, we've got a lot on our plates as, as a whole council. But some people have more bandwidth than others. And so I want, I want people, if they're interested in this, if they, if they want to work on this, you know, and, and work with other members of the community, like Debbie or other members of the Environmental Advisory Group or whatever, more power to them. I want to basically give them the, the ability to do that and launch them into that. And I thought doing it through a committee of council is probably the most effective way.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Well, the two questions, the amendment that I was thinking about was that we definitely would, we would partner with the EAC for sure, or at least they need to be a part of it. And then the second thing was, when we've done some, in the past, we've made specific rules with regards to committees and, and resolution, a resolution stating the actual, you know, what are, who would be on it, what are the rules, what, I mean, we have some of those for some of the other committees, not necessarily council committees. Is that something we want to go that far yet, or leave it just as a committee that you'll be appointing, or?
No, I, I envision this as being, looking for, I'm looking for three volunteers. And I, and then after we get those three volunteers, they run with it, and they set it up any way they want. Working with, I have no objection to working with an Environment Advisory Committee. And, you know, you can kind of set up your own rules. This is, I mean, this is still just looking at the issue.
Exploratory.
Exploring it.
Yes.
And getting to the point where you're ready to make a recommendation as to whether or not we sign an MOU.
Okay.
And then you bring it back to council, and then we talk about it. But I'm basically looking for, for, for the committee to form themselves and run with it.
Okay. Well, the motion still stands, right?
Yep.
As is.
Any other discussion?
Can I say I want to volunteer?
Absolutely.
Okay, I would like to volunteer for one of the three roles if we choose to create this.
Yeah, I would, I would say that, that in, in voting in the affirmative for this, you should be prepared to be ready to volunteer.
Well, volunteer, yeah.
But not necessarily, not required. Maybe I'm making too much, should we do this by roll call, or do we, can we do a voice vote on this?
I think we can do four voices.
Would you like to have three people on council?
Do I, do I have, do I have three volunteers?
Yeah, I'll do it.
We've got Jason, we've got Andrew, and we've got Nancy. Great.
And Jason.
Jason.
Jason, Andrew, and Nancy.
Jason, Andrew, and Nancy. Anyone else? We can make it more than three. Okay. With, with, with those volunteers, I'm enthusiastic about this committee. Let's, let's.
Because you're not on it?
Absolutely. Which would make you, all of you happy as well. And let's, 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 let's just do a voice vote.
Will they be public meetings that someone that's not on the committee can attend? They would have to be, yes.
It would be on the schedule, put on a Borough schedule, just like all the other regular committees of the, of council.
Reports.
Right. Reports.
I'm, I'm just throwing it out there. I know it's not the policy, but the policy committee gets canceled. Can you just meet the time that the policy does, so we don't have to spend money on advertising?
No, you, I mean, you still, you still have to advertise all their meetings.
Whether the, yeah, the name change.
The time slot.
Yeah, yeah, we still have to advertise, so we're not saving much there. Besides, that policy committee could be having a lot of heavy meetings in the second half of the year. Not sure yet. In any case, let's, 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 let's have a voice vote on this, now that we've, we've hammered out all the details. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to other business. 2023 Roadway Project Highway Aid Award Letter will consist of paving Hillcrest Avenue from Barnsley Avenue to Stockham Avenue, and North Lafayette Avenue from Hillcrest Avenue to Clymer Avenue, for a project total of $215,685.96.
Is this a motion because we changed the pricing?
No, no, no motions needed. This is just.
This is a notice.
It's just informational.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just because, you know, when we awarded it and doing with JDM, the municipal authority came to us, and they said they had some work to do along Keystone? Yeah, Keystone. And so rather than pave, have it ripped up, we're going to coordinate with them for when they do their work, to have Dave then.
Thank you.
Anyway, I, just to finish, we will not be awarding Keystone Avenue at this time, due to work needing to be accomplished by the MMA in this roadway. Borough officials, we have any, any Borough official comments? No?
I do. No?
Okay, before we get to the appointments, go ahead.
I was just, I'm sorry. I was noticing the, the financials look, Judith, look a little different. Are they same? It looks nice. I was, just want to compliment, it was much, this format seems different, and it's more readable.
It's the same format. It's just that what's happening is, with admins, if some of these line item codes are not used throughout most of the months, and then all of a sudden they're used, you're going to be seeing it's actually growing, because there were zeros there before, you'll see some more things. But, but, but it's, it's being done now in a more timely manner. We're, we're catching up, so.
Yeah, thank you. It looks nice.
Thank you.
I, I'd just like to, people to note, do you, can, do you know offhand how much we've raised with EIT?
I don't, do not off the top of my head.
It's over, is it over a million?
One billion, one hundred nineteen thousand dollars.
That has been brought in to this council, which is considering, before I came in, you were at a $700,000 deficit.
Yes.
And now we're, we're not at a deficit.
Correct.
So that, I just, you know, thank you, and thank everybody, and I just want to point that out. I think it needs to be recognized.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Judith.
Very good.
Thank you.
If we can stick on the, the financial for a second, I was hoping that, when, when will our next financial meeting be?
Andrew and I have to have a discussion about that, because of the fact that there is, there's another meeting that's actually in conflict with, and I don't have it off the top of my head, with the finance meeting. So Andrew and I will need to have a, a discussion regarding that. And, and when, when it is, we will, we will shoot an email out to council, so everyone knows.
Thank you.
They will.
I have a number of questions. With regards to the format, this month's format, it is different, but it has no totals. Like, the previous one actually breaks it down to the different, different accounts. This just goes straight through. But I just, I just had a few, a few questions, so, that I hope to discuss. I mean, I, I'd love to discuss them tonight, but that would take up too much time, so.
Sure. When we have our next finance meeting, we can, we can do that.
I appreciate that, that we could actually go over some line-by-line items.
Sure.
And it looks like the, the $52,000, that came out of a miscellaneous line? Is that, there was a $52,000 payment out of the miscellaneous, and I'm guessing that that might have been the tax refund?
Yes, it was. Yes, and to clarify for you, Nancy, the reason it was on my report at 40,000 is that's when I first started my report, that's where we were at.
Until the others.
And then eventually, once we, we spoke with Attorney Holbert and so forth, we ended up, it ended up being more. So I apologize for it not being the, the higher number, but it was in the financials as the 52. So that's what the miscellaneous is. Yes.
Just a couple of the questions, if you know. When do we pay out the longevity, longevity pay? Is that on the anniversary dates? Or end of year? Anybody know?
I think the chief might be able to answer that question. Chief, can you answer that question by any chance?
When is the one, when all the longevity pays paid out? Is that on their anniversary or end of year?
End of the year is what I was thinking.
Okay, because it was a payment made this month.
Well, we.
Judith?
Yes.
Judith?
Yes. Virginia, if you could answer that, please.
Yes, I apologize for interrupting. Actually, longevity is paid in June and in December.
December.
And it depends on the anniversary date of the individual officer.
Thank you.